The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to another edition of I on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hensel along with my co-host Tony Palmieri. We're taping this on the 19th of January. In about three weeks or so, there will be -- no, actually, it's about four weeks, I guess, from now. We will be going to the polls in this county for a primary election, for one judicial race, some city council races, as well as the Oshkosh School Board race, among possibly some other things, depending on where you live and where you're seeing this right now. In any event, on this particular show, we will be meeting four of the candidates for Oshkosh area school board. Joining us right now is John Daggett. He has run for school board in the past. He's running again this time around, and we're very pleased to have him and the rest of our guests on the show. So, welcome, John. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, Tony, for inviting me. It's really an honor to be part of this great event, and I sure appreciate the opportunity for the people to get to know me a little. And I hope that I can, if I was be a candidate or would be elected, I hope that I could do something immensely for this school board. It needs something. It needs a real big boost.
Well, let's talk about that. Let's, why don't you start by just telling folks a little bit about yourself? I know you ran last year for a few different offices: mayor, was it county executive also that you ran for?
Yes, I did run for the county executive, but I mean, that's, should we say, potatoes of the past.
Oh, yeah. That's water over the dam. But just for people who didn't see anything last year about you, why don't you tell folks a little bit about yourself and why you're in the school board race?
Well, first of all, let me say that I'm a retired -- I have a lifelong medical profession. I did research at the Hematology and Pediatrics Institute, University of Fryburg, University of Wurzburg. I've written a number of books. I worked at Kristof's Bath and psychiatric hospital in Girpingen. I worked also at Phillips Hospital. I'm really honored to say that I worked for the Department of Defense as a GS9 in housing, also involved in Protective Environmental Protection Agency of Europe. I happen to have a degree from the University of Oshkosh. I really don't say it's the best school, but I think I've accomplished a lot. I got a master's degree from Boston University. That was, I obtained that in Kauzhu, Germany. I also went to school at the University of Erlangen, medical profession. I have a little background in English, so I also attended a little school in Oxford. As far as my qualifications for the school board, you know, as you realize that there isn't much that you really have to be a school board member. You should have some experience and knowledge and be intelligent and aware of sensitivity of the students. And you should have some good relationship with the community. You should have something to say why you're running for this school board. Do you have to, and I think that I can say that I, in the past, I've been involved in community. I recently formed a grievancy commission, and I'm very proud of myself that in five days, I got, or five or six days, 5,000 signatures.
What's the grievancy commission?
The grievancy commission would be to establish about police brutality, about keeping the 13 departments of the City of Oshkosh in order. You realize that the City of Oshkosh is run by a mayor. His name is Richard Willock, and which is controlled by himself. It's sad that the city, the council members have very little to say about the input of what happens in the City of Oshkosh. The police chief really is himself, and he should be under the control of the city manager. If there's any problems, it seems like the citizens of Oshkosh come out on the short end of the stick because there's no democratic process. The grievancy commission would be a process in which they could appeal whatever would come up, and there would be a real democratic process. Unfortunately, I'm now in the phase of appealing this, and I don't know if it'll ever go through, but I keep on plugging away.
Very good. Well, as far as this democratic process, for the school board, why the school board? And what do you have to bring to the school board dais, if you will?
Well, first of all, the school board members or candidates should care about issues. They should want to focus on local education. They should have, there's some impact about the growth and development of kids in Oshkosh. They should have a record of substantial community involvement and tangible achievements. As I just mentioned about, the tangible achievement would be forming this grievancy commission. And as a person that's running for the school board should also know about the school board policies. They should know that determine, they should know that the school board is for determining priorities, to provide directions, assign responsibilities, establish commitments, and offer public and accountability as information to give notice of legal requirements and ensure legal compliance. School board policies should be to safeguard the students, to ensure that the students learn something. I'm very proud that President Bush had this no child left behind, in which sad but true that the standards of the students in Oshkosh are very low, and they should be much higher. If we, for example, which is true, that 85% of the students are proficient in math, or 36. What do you think, Tony?
About? About what?
Professionists in math.
I don't think we're doing good enough, or well enough, I should say.
What are you think the problem is, Tony?
Well, we can get into a big debate about what the problem is.
Well, yeah, I mean--
I'm not, I'm not running for school board, but I'd be interested in knowing what you think the problem is.
I think the problem is that the seven candidates on the school board have no connect, no real connection to what is really necessary to make a school board function. They should have something as far as professional knowledge and be associated. They should have, know that high-quality professional development starts with their own profession, that they have to be able to devote a lot of time. The school board members is something in which isn't that you go one time a month or two times a month. It's all the time involved as part of your daily process to do something for the students. And this is, it's a shame that, that the school board members get such a minimal amount, like 2,500 per year. It's actually peanuts, and it should be increased up to 10,000. When you think what the superintendent receives, it's incredible.
Oh, you think the school board members should make 10,000 a year?
Yes, I do.
And that would, they would get a better school board that way?
Absolutely.
Okay. What, is there anyone on the current school board that you think is doing a good job, or are all seven of them not doing a good job?
There's only one that's providing something that's good for, for the community. His name is Mr. Becker. I don't know him at all personally, and I never went to any of his things that he has at the fire station on Saturday afternoons. I was advertised, but this is fantastic, his efforts. I think that there's other school board members that, they're nice. They have a nice personality, but it takes more than personality to make a school board function. They have to have the knowledge. They have to have the experience. And they have to know that the function of the school board is for the students themselves, and that education is great, but the most important part about education is for the children.
What about the superintendent? You think he's doing a good job?
No, he's absolutely doing a horrible job. He's, he's filling his pockets with every angle that he can. I'm sure by just stating this that he's not very proud that I'd say that, but he wouldn't be able to do the same position in New York City or any large city because he wouldn't have, he's not qualified.
What's the, what's the major, what's the major thing that he and the board are doing wrong?
Well, first of all, a person should have some, some knowledge of business. And I'm not saying that, that business is, is what makes a school board function, because a government agency is a service for the community, but business is for profit. What's he doing wrong? He's not, he does not have the qualification to handle the budget, in which is way, way too much. He, it's on, he has to be able to always know how much is given, how much money has been given out. And I'm sure that there's sometimes being spent twice, or a number of times for the same item.
You think the school board spends too much money?
Absolutely.
All right. Do you have, do you have any suggestions on what they should be cutting?
First of all, they should cut down on the 17 schools. They have to, there's way too many. Are you aware that, Mr. Tony, that what, that the system is that they get $134 million for this present budget, and they received only from the county or the city $34 million? And that $34 million is being paid for the buildings, and the, the actual 95% comes from the federal sharing, profit sharings from Washington. What would happen if this money would be cut out? That means that the taxes would go up 500%. My taxes on my house on Bone Street would go up to $10,000. Wouldn't that be nice if the City of Oshkosh would be really honest with the citizens of Oshkosh? Wouldn't it really be nice?
Well, I, I'm all for honesty. I know you're for honesty, Cheryl.
Absolutely. You know, we're almost out of time. Is there any one issue in particular that, other than the school board not being paid enough, and I guess the superintendent being paid more and not being qualified, what, what is the one issue that you feel really is just outrageous right now facing the school district?
Well, first of all, the, the school board must take responsibility for the needs of the students. There shouldn't be anybody feeling like they're, I don't know the fail rate. In fact, this week is for tests. Those tests should be public, and there should be some type of system in which the tests are given out to the public by having a website. I'm amazed that, that having all this ability here in Oshkosh, that somebody doesn't, that I'm the first one to say that the grade should be publicly known. You do, you don't have to do it by the names. You could do it by a number.
Okay. We're, we're down to like a minute or so. I mean, do you, do you want to wrap up and just kind of tell folks why they should vote for you?
Well, first of all, I think there should be a new approach to professional development in teaching school and mythology and the teacher's instructions. There must be a better means of educating students than they're doing it presently in Oshkosh. And there must be more parent involvement. There must be a means for, to have teachers and principals that they, they have to qualify more for, it's called accountability. And if this does, if this continues with lack of accountability, you'll always have teachers failing, students failing. And this is not what the system is about. The system is about is to educate students, that they're, give something to the society, that they become qualified instead of making Wisconsin just a dairy state.
Okay, very good. I wish we had more time, but if you make it through the primary next month, then we will have you back, and we'll have more time to spend with you, I promise. But thank you very much for being here.
It's been a great honor. Thank you so much. I wanted to say something about Harry Truman.
Well, unfortunately, we'll save that for another time.
That's after the primary.
But thank you again. And we'll be right back. When we come back, we'll be joined by current school board candidate and incumbent Dan Becker. We'll be right back.
All right.
Welcome back to I on Oshkosh. We are joined now by Dan Becker, who currently serves on the school board. He is one of two incumbents, rather, one of three incumbents.
Correct.
Who will be on the ballot this, this particular spring election. Dan Becker, this is the conclusion of your first term?
Correct.
So you're seeking a second, three-year term?
I am.
For folks who, you know, I, I think most people in the city have probably, you know, heard you on the program before, seen you at a school board meeting, attended one of your town hall meetings, and have some idea of who you are and why you're on the school board. But for anyone who doesn't, why don't you just kind of briefly tell folks a little bit about who Dan Becker is?
Sure. Cheryl, I've made my home here in Oshkosh for the last 13 years. I've had the opportunity to see the value of an Oshkosh education through the eyes of my 11-year-old son. I've been involved in various youth mentoring activities over the last six or seven years, and deeply value the impact I've been able to make on some of the youth in the community. I think really the question that the voters need to ask themselves before they vote coming up in the February primary is, which of the people that are going to be running for school board best represent their viewpoint and those, and their beliefs and ideas? I mean, they really need to ask themselves, does someone who votes to serve alcohol in our schools share their values? Does someone who votes to give themselves automatic pay raises every year represent their interests? Does someone who votes in, excuse me, who votes in favor of a calendar despite a petition with 600 signatures asking for alternatives have their best interest in mind? Does someone who votes for 8% to 10% tax increases share their interests and is looking out for them? I didn't do any of those things, Cheryl, Tony. The other incumbents can't make that same claim. I've conducted public, excuse me, monthly public meetings to garner public input. I think that's important in this process. And I'll continue to do that should the voters in this community return me to the school board.
Well, Dan, what do you, what do you see to be your one or two major accomplishments in your three years?
Well, I think the, the most major accomplishment I had, and unfortunately for the taxpayers, the majority of the board didn't support it, was finding $2.5 million in healthcare savings that the, the board and the district could have realized. But as I said, the majority of the board, which included the other two incumbents, didn't see fit to support that idea, and the taxpayers didn't get their $2.5 million.
And those two incumbents are Amy Weinshaim and Dennis Kavanaugh?
That is correct.
All right. You had mentioned something that kind of piqued my curiosity. Voting to serve alcohol in the schools.
Correct.
Which, which issue are you specifically referring to there?
The, the Oshkosh Symphony actually petitioned the board to, to serve alcohol at Alberta Kimball.
At the, in the auditorium?
Correct.
See, why do you have a problem with that? Because it's after-school hours when these activities are taking place. It is a separate civic auditorium, albeit attached to Oshkosh West High School.
Correct.
What's your issue with that?
It sets a bad example. I think even when we get administrators coming to us and pleading not, not to do it, I think that speaks volumes. But aside from that, it's a liability issue as well, Cheryl. You know, what, what happens in the eventuality, I would argue, that there's an accident or an incident after one of those performances? Who's on the hook? The taxpayers are. And I think my job being elected to the board was to look out for the taxpayers. And allowing the possibility of a, a major lawsuit because of a pedestrian incident or what have you, isn't in the best interest of the taxpayers. It's opening them up to a large liability, in my opinion.
Yeah, we do allow drinking in, in parks for different events.
True, we do. But I believe, and maybe a candidate for city council might be better and able to answer this question, I think the, the actual server of the alcohol is the one held responsible. I believe their, the city parks have a license to serve alcohol. The school district doesn't. So, again, with that comes some responsibility, and I'm not sure the taxpayers of this community want to open themselves up to that.
Okay.
Dan, I, my, my perception has been that the board has made no progress on school boundary issues. What, what in your judgment needs to be done in the next three years?
We are actually, as I'm sure a lot of your viewers are well aware, we're looking into that issue as, even as we speak.
But we've been looking into it, Dan, for like 10 years now.
Well, I think, I think we've gotten a lot farther along in this process, and I'm going to make it my, my commitment to the, the community to put this issue to bed.
Well, where are we right now in the process?
We're, we're actually in the very preliminary stages. We are, at the next meeting, going to vote on a facilitator to garner public input on that issue.
After all these years, we need a facilitator now on the issue?
Well, I think the facilitator does one very important thing for us, Tony, and that gives us detachment. I think if you, if you have the district lead the discussion, at least the perception's going to be that we're trying to lead it down a specific road. Bring it outside, or it's not the case.
When you first ran three years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, you were one of the neighborhood school advocates.
And I still am.
Well, what would you say to the school of thought that says it's the neighborhood school advocates that are the problem here? You don't want boundaries changed if they would have a negative effect on what you perceive to be your neighborhood school. I don't mean you personally.
Understood.
But neighborhood school advocates.
I, I think we can still maintain neighborhood schools, even if we do shift boundaries. I think neighborhood schools are an important issue for our grade school kids, our elementary kids, as well as, although to a lesser extent, our middle school kids. What we're really looking at, where the real disparity lies, is in the high school. And I'm not so sure neighborhood schools are such a big issue. A lot of our, a lot of our kids are driving their own cars at that point, so it's not such a big issue at that point, but--
Sure.
The, the school board, this time around, voted for a pay raise of 4.2%, 7% for, for the teachers, when the QEO is at 3.8% and has been for as long as I can remember.
It's pay and benefits, right?
It's, it's a combination of pay and benefits, right. Why was that done?
The, the prevailing attitude on the board was to, to make sure that we were comparable with other surrounding school districts and to, to give the teachers' union a warm fuzzy, Cheryl, quite frankly. I wasn't in favor of, of that particular pay raise. In fact, voted against it, was in the minority, unfortunately. Again, I strive to garner some savings in compensation, but again, that, that wasn't looked unkindly by, by any other, anybody else on the board other than Mr. Schneider.
And yet, the board basically forced the district into arbitration over 3.7% for the paraprofessionals, right?
Correct.
I mean, it makes no sense to me.
I know. I know.
Makes no sense. Do you think that the river should remain a barrier for north and south boundaries?
The river is an artificial boundary, Cheryl. God put it here for us in His infinite wisdom. We shouldn't use it as a boundary anymore. We can't continue to support a high school on the north side of town because we're landlocked. We've got a prison to the north. We've got the county grounds to the north. We've got the lake to the east. We can continue to do nothing but grow to the west. And if we, we continue to, to see declining enrollment at north, we're going to have disparate educational quality on one side of the river versus the other. So we have to make the, the river no longer the boundary, quite simply.
Dan, there are a lot of teachers who vote, obviously.
Correct.
Why should teachers in the community support you when you've essentially referred to their compensation package as a warm and fuzzy for the teachers' union? Why would a teacher find your candidacy appealing? Or are you not trying to attract teachers?
Contrary to public belief, Tony, I am not a teacher hater. I, in fact, live with a, a teacher that teaches in the Amaro School District. I know what, what the teachers get for benefits. I enjoy some of those same benefits through my wife. I'm not out to bash a teacher. I'm, I'm just out to make sure the taxpayers get the best value for their dollar. We found a, a healthcare alternative that provided virtually the same benefits at a lesser expense. Everybody wins at that point. If, if I was a teacher hater, I wouldn't be able to go home tonight, Tony.
What about the school calendar issue? Now, you, you made a very public show of, of anger, really, at the school board not wanting to reopen those negotiations after 600 signatures had been put forth. Are you happy with this year's calendar?
Well, this year's calendar is actually the one I thought over.
Right.
But we haven't yet begun to discuss the calendar for the upcoming school year. I would hope, administration has promised us that we're going to actually get more public input. That remains to be seen. I would like to see some, some more family-friendly changes made to the calendar.
Aren't they trying to get some feedback right now on how this calendar change is, is affecting them?
What was promised is that a survey's going to go out with report cards coming up here in the next week. So, probably by the time the show airs.
Prior to making the changes, I mean, and this is the second time that the calendar, i.e. early release, has changed. It changed the prior school year as well.
Correct.
So, do you know, being on the school board for a couple of years now, three years, was there any kind of study done prior to making those two changes?
To my knowledge, some, some research was done into the collaboration piece, but not how the impact of the day selected was going to impact the families.
So this then, I'm assuming, based on what you're saying, is reactive management?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dan, Governor Doyle came out in his State of the States speech the other night. He sounded strongly in favor of four-year-old kindergarten. What's your view on four-year-old kindergarten?
Well, the way it's been presented to the board at this point in time, Tony, because of budget reconciliation, is we either get four-year-old kindergarten, and if we do get it, we have to do away with the teenage parent program, and we have to do away with the VIP program. And I'm not prepared to do away with either one of those two programs. I think they provide some valuable service to the community as well as those kids in question. So if it's an either-or question, it won't be any four-year-old kindergarten if I have anything to say about it.
All right.
And I don't mean that to sound harsh.
Sure.
But I think we need to serve those students that we've already got under the roof, if you will.
Okay.
And not, not branch out until we're able to do so cost-effectively.
Well, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, even kindergarten for five-year-olds--
Is not required by state law.
Is not required under state law. So I don't see the benefit then to necessarily force four-year-old kindergarten, kindergarten upon a district.
I've actually talked at length with a kindergarten teacher here in the district, currently, currently working for the district, and she, she, excuse me, shared some of her concerns. We may actually widen the gap between the kids if we, if we implement four-year-old kindergarten, unless we can ensure that we're actually serving the kids that need to be served. For serving kids that really don't need that service, we're actually going to make them far more prepared for kindergarten and do nothing but figuratively shoot ourselves in the foot.
Sure. We've got very, very limited time, like about a minute and a half. Just real briefly, tell, tell us how much money has been proposed for kind of doing a study and then hiring a consultant to improve the district's image in, in the community?
Well, if you're, if you're referring to the folks at Bluedoor Consulting--
Yes, I am.
Okay. It runs the district, last, last time I looked at an accounts payable statement, anywhere between $20,000 and $30,000.
Okay. All right.
Is that money well spent in your judgment?
I don't know. I can get a blanket, give a blanket answer to that question. In some cases, yes. In some cases, I'm not so sure.
Okay. We have about 40 seconds left, so in, in about 30 seconds, why don't you just look into camera three and tell folks why they should vote for you on Tuesday, February 21st?
I've never feared making tough decisions, folks. It's easy to go along with the crowd. What really takes courage is to stand up for what you believe in. I've strived, I've strived to make sure that you, the taxpayers of this district, get their money's worth. Rest assured, I will continue to do so during, continue to do so. During my time on the board, I've identified that, that health insurance savings. Unfortunately for you, that wasn't realized. Rest assured, though, that I will continue to seek out opportunities to make our district more efficient while always demanding accountability, and most of all, ensuring that your children receive the best education possible. When you go to vote, all I ask is that you say yes to Dan Becker so that he can say no for you.
All right. Excellent. Dan, thank you very much for being here.
I appreciate the opportunity.
If you are one of the survivors from the primary, we will have you back, and we'll have more time to--
I look forward to coming back, Cheryl.
Thanks again, and good luck. We'll be right back, and when we do come back, we'll be joined by Dennis Kavanaugh. We'll be right back.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You, too.
Thanks.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit-- Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Iona Oshkosh, and we are now joined by current school board member and therefore incumbent Dennis Kavanaugh. Dennis, this is the second, you're in your second term right now?
Completing my third.
Completing your third. So you're going for, basically, 12 years is what you want on this school board. You're going for your fourth term. Well, congratulations on being a candidate. For folks, you know, I'm sure that they probably know you and know what you're all about as far as your voting history, but for those who don't, why don't you tell us and tell the viewers out there a little bit about yourself and, you know, why you're running for another term on the school board?
Well, a couple of things happened in the early '90s. Somebody said that orphanages were good for kids, and my brother died. And it got to the point where it's time to make contributions back. He was a, kind of, was a wake-up call for me. And at that time, the school board, my girls, I have two daughters that were both, have now graduated from the school system, both from North High. The oldest one, I'll brag now, is a nuclear engineer.
Wow.
She came out of there with very good status. The other one's, Bridget, is my youngest. She's a sophomore at Edgewood, and she's, it's a perfect match for her. I've been married for 32 years now to Cynthia Thorpe. She's indeed my best friend, my best consult, my best critic, and it works well. I've been employed for the state of Wisconsin for, coming up to 32 years now. I've been a social worker my entire package. I got my master, my undergrad degree here in Oshkosh, pre-social work department, so it was a social psych, and then I got my master's at the University of Iowa. I've worked in juvenile system, and for the last 20 years, I've been at the Wisconsin Resource Center, managing the, those units that people aren't making it there in.
Okay. All right.
So why are you running for another term?
I think we're, I'm excited. It finally dawned on me, this is a big vote, and it takes time to turn it, and I think the turn has occurred, and there's some exciting things going on with the restructuring of the 612. I think that going on alone gives me enough excitement to keep me going for a while. I think we're finally recognizing that we're moving away from a set of 100-year-old set of criteria for evaluating kids and looking at kids. I mean, up until 25 years ago, we were satisfied that if we had 12% of our kids went on, you know, the normal bell curve, if 12% of those kids went on were bright and we cultured them, and the other 60% in the middle were okay. I mean, some grew later, and then there were some kids that were handicapped that we never really did touch. And it was interesting, if you look at that, that almost mimicked the manufacturing environment we had going. That was needed for the person to make it in manufacturing. So the education system was making, was producing what the workforce needed. The workforce has changed right now with the kindergarten coming, and we, I, none of, no one in this room knows what that kindergarten's job is going to be.
No.
And that's the scary part, and that's also the exciting part. And I think the other thing that we're looking at now, or I'm getting, when we look at this reconfiguration going on, there's a lot of things we can control in education, but one thing that we've been real hesitant to let go of is time. We keep saying you have to learn in an X number of minutes, and you have to learn an X number of weeks. And some kids just don't learn that way. Some kids, you need to have the ability of letting them provide more time for it, so that this restructuring, I think, is going to afford a lot of kids the opportunity, because I think we're running into a society where we need 90% of the kids to be successful in jobs. So I think that swing is important, and it takes time, I mean, with the curriculum development and a lot of things going on at the same time, but it takes a lot of effort, and again, patience to look at what's going on.
Sure.
But it's, so those are some things I'm looking at.
What do you think that, now you've had nine years almost on the board, what do you think has been Dennis Kavanaugh's call to fame here? What can you, you know, what can you stamp your name on and say, "I contributed this to the Oshkosh area school district"?
When I look back at the time, it's, I've been looking at, we've made some significant changes in our curriculum. I supported the everyday math, and it's a different way of doing business in the district. People resisted it, the teachers resisted it.
Sure.
But as we look at the, it's been in place now four years, we're getting the test results coming back. Those four-year-olds are doing extremely well in the test, and they're doing it so well that we're constructive, math is now being entered into the middle school, and the high school will pick up on it. It's the first radical change in the way we deliver math, because everyone in this room, well, maybe not you, Tony, but the rest of us, had issues with math in school.
Oh, I had issues with math in school.
I did.
Oh, I did.
And so that, and why does it have to be a fight all the time learning math? I think there's different ways of approaching it, and that's what we're seeing. Now, the biggest stumbling, is that now the high school, middle school's changed, now the high school's got changed, and that's the, each time you go from elementary to middle, you end at the more, a little bit more resistance, but I think the change results are being seen.
Okay. Go ahead, Tony.
Dennis, in your nine years on the board, there's been, I would say, no progress made on the boundary issue. We have not moved boundaries in a long time, correct? We keep talking about it, but why didn't Dennis Kavanaugh and other incumbents push this along? It should have been pushed along by now, don't you think?
I think we tried to put together a package out of the group of 100, I guess, the committee of 100.
Yeah.
And I think some things came out of it. I think there was unwillingness in power of the board to address it. I think we tried to bring it back this year and a little bit last year, we're saying, this is costing us money to keep doing it this way. These solo classes are costing us money, and trying to approach it on that approach, on that basis. I think the other, I mean, and I'll be candid, I think the other issue that I see with this boundary thing, the elephant in the room, until this city or district is willing to sit down and talk about, is athletics.
Athletics.
I think that is a component of this boundary thing that keeps, that's out there, and I think there needs to be an intelligent or a reasonable conversation about this, about athletics.
Explain that for us. How was the athletes the elephant in the room?
When you talk about, you know, people talk about academics, we need to improve academics here or there. And what you, but when you get done shoveling all the stuff around, it comes down to, my daughter or son was in a program that started on the next side of town and was developed to come along this way, instead of having a community-wide youth, I don't care, youth athletic program of any sort. They're very colloquial, and they funnel. I think that's an issue that goes on, and I think the other part, until that's addressed, and then the community has to recognize that the boundaries that have been put up there that were perhaps, and I'll say perhaps, a viable boundary issue in the 1900s, 1915. We have good transportation across the river, we have good transportation across Butte Mountain, we have a number of issues that go on that have been all addressed. In fact, right now, we're taking kids from the north side to the south side when we look at the Sunset Kids. So, I mean, it's been slow coming, and I think to build a consensus that there's an issue, I think that's been the frustration for me in this, to go out there and pound my chest that there's a boundary issue without having, where do we want to go with it, or how should we attack it? Is it just, I'm not, I don't like to make noise just for a second, make a noise, I have a package in hand.
Sure. Cheryl.
The school board has, this time around, given teachers, can't find my notes here.
4.2.
4.2, it was 4.27, I believe, percent for a raise. There we go. 4.2, 4.27% when the QEO is 3.8%. And you voted in favor of the 4.27. Why did you vote in favor of that?
Well, I think, first, you need to understand that 3.8, then the lanes are added on top of that, so that brings it to about 4125.
Okay.
And that's, they modified the law, so that happens, so that's about a percent difference. I think, well, we, the reality, if, I voted for that because I thought it was a reasonable settlement for the product we're getting. I think we have some quality educators out there, and I think it was reasonable. On the other hand, if you sat back and said we weren't going to settle and force it into a QEO, we wouldn't have had any concession, any modifications on the insurance plan that the package, the new package includes some significant changes in insurance plans that affects the current workforce and the retired workforce, that reduces our, the district's overall costs to the tune of about $75,000, $80,000 on retirement cost savings. So that's one, I supported that way. The drug card was in there again, it was reaffirmed, the drug card, so we modified the insurance. The board told us the goal, I'm on the negotiating team, so we were setting with the goal of getting a health insurance change and solidifying some, solidifying the other changes we made in some of the benefit packages earlier.
Okay. A different topic, because we have short time here. How do you feel about four-year-old kindergarten?
I'm excited about it.
You are?
I'm excited about it. Not as the lacrosse model, I'm excited about that type, with the collaboration with daycare centers and a number of different partners enter into it. As you know, I work in, a social worker in prison, I see a lot of things that are failures, and I see some of that tremendous cost that is upon citizens because of that. I look at a, the earlier, the interventions are the most effective and the most efficient, and it costs less. It's economic to our advantage to have earlier interventions.
Wouldn't it be more advantageous than Dennis to maybe, you know, petition lawmakers in Madison to make five-year-old kindergarten, which is when most kids enter kindergarten, mandatory?
I don't know if it needs to be legislated from Madison. I think there's money out there right now for four-year-olds to support, the governor's budget has it, and the current budget already has money in it for a four-year-old kindergarten. It's a funding formula that essentially, it's halftime, so it's a halftime reimbursement after the first year. So it's a, it is funded to legislature right now. There is, I think Madison's legislated enough things that they don't back.
Well, that's true. That's true. But I just, I don't know. When one thing's not legislated or mandated, to try and put even younger kids into the school system, when a lot of people don't feel that that's the route that we should be taking, I've got some real problems with that, I guess. And the money's the other issue. I mean, you know, you say that there's money there, but maybe we could implore our legislators to put that money into something else that we need more. We apologize, we're almost out of time here. Why don't you take about 30 seconds, look into camera three, tell folks why they should vote for Dennis Kavanaugh in the primary on Tuesday, February 21st?
Well, I'm Dennis Kavanaugh, and I'm running for my fourth term. I brought to this community a feeling of stability on the board. I have, when I looked at the, my first pamphlet I did when I was a first-time candidate, I said I would vote for issues, and I would evaluate that vote on how it affects the kids. I will maintain that, I will not change with that. I think we are there to promote public education and its effect on kids. We need to be better effective, better and more effective at evaluating those programs, and I think we're getting there. But I think I will always lean toward a decision that favors the children.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much for being here.
Pleasure to meet you.
We apologize for the shortness of the time, but if you make it through the primary, we'll have you back, and we'll have more time to chat.
Good. Look forward to it.
When we come back, we're going to be joined by newcomer to the political scene here in Oshkosh, Wayne Traska. We'll be right back.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's why my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here.
I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to the final segment of Iona Oshkosh, and this time around, we are joined by Wayne Traska. Wayne is seeking his first-ever term on the Oshkosh area school board, and we welcome you to the show, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
We appreciate you joining us. We only have 13 minutes approximately to spend with you, but why don't you start out that 13 minutes by telling us and viewers why you are seeking a term on the Oshkosh school board, and a little bit about who Wayne Traska is?
Well, I live in the Oshkosh area now for about eight years. My wife Susan and I came back to Oshkosh, actually, I'm from the Wausau area originally. She's originally from Oshkosh. And we came back to town, started a family, and now we have three children, a set of twins that are six, and a seven-year-old.
That'll keep you busy.
Absolutely.
[laughing].
And I think that's one of the reasons why I've struck into a very strong interest in the school district.
Sure.
It's my kids' future, and as they've been introduced into the system now for the last couple of years, I've had a lot more attention to what's been going on or what hasn't been going on. So there are some things that I think I can lend to the party here and make a difference.
Sure.
Are you, I'm sorry, that's what I was going to ask.
What do you do for a living?
I'm the materials manager at Muse Metal Products here in town.
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, one of the things that obviously has been going on in the district is early release and, you know, the school calendar. Now, that probably hasn't affected your kids because of their age, or has it?
Yes, it has.
It has.
My two six-year-olds are in kindergarten, and my seven-year-old is in second grade. So it has affected their school day as well.
How has it affected your family, for example? I mean, has it been sort of counterproductive to the way you folks have done things in the past?
Well, I would say that the change in the calendar, I guess, gave us an opportunity to try and look for a different way to do things, as far as our, taking care of our children, making sure that their needs are met outside of the classroom. I view it as somewhat of a disruption to their day, especially young children. They're used to a routine. They're very comfortable in a routine, and now that routine is disrupted, you know, twice every month. So we've had to adapt, we've had to change.
Sure.
There are three incumbents running, Mr. Becker, Mrs. Weinshime, and Mr. Kavanaugh. Do you perceive yourself as running against any of those incumbents?
No, I really don't perceive this as running against. I'm not trying to beat somebody. I guess I'm trying to win a position to make a difference. I see all three seats as currently open in the future, and it's up to the voters to decide who's going to fill them.
But anybody who watches the school board meetings, Wayne will immediately notice that it seems to be Mr. Schneider and Mr. Becker on pretty much one side, and then you've got Weinshime, Bowen, Kavanaugh, McDermott, Sweene. Do you see yourself on a side?
No, if I'm on any side, I think I'm on the side of the kids. the side of the kids. Every issue has different nuances, different factors that need to be taken into consideration. I guess I don't see myself siding on that side or this side, but...
On the side of the kids.
The side of the kids.
Alright. Go ahead.
Well, speaking of sides, boundary issues have been an issue for years in this community, with the river sort of being the dividing line for the two sides, north and south, and, you know, where, but, but the boundary issues have been discussed and discussed and discussed, and nothing has ever materialized from that. What are your views on, on boundary issues, and as they relate specifically, I guess, to neighborhood schools?
Well, I feel that nothing changing is no longer an option. Quite clearly, there are issues in a number of ways that are facing the district today, and I feel are going to continue to face the district moving forward. Keeping things the way they are is not going to move this city forward, is not going to enhance education for a large segment of children. I believe that something needs to change there. I'm currently, I sat on the committee for the school district to select the facilitating group.
Okay.
To lead this community to collect feedback from all the stakeholders. This is a very important decision, and it's going to affect a lot of people. A lot of people have an emotionally charged opinion.
Oh, yeah.
And this isn't going to be an easy decision to make. No doubt, someone is going to walk away not happy for some reason. I think the purpose here is, let's gather all the information from all the stakeholders, listen to them, see what they have to say, not have preconceived notions on, well, this is the best answer, or that's the best answer. Because we need to accommodate everybody as best we can.
Sure.
Within reason.
What's, Wayne, wrong with the current school board, and what would you do differently? You're obviously running because you feel there's a problem. So what is that problem, and how would you do, what would you do differently?
Well, I'm not approaching this campaign from, I guess, a negative standpoint, not that there's something broken and I'm going to come in and fix it. I'm approaching it as, I think I have something to bring to the table, and I think I can make it even better.
But if there's nothing broken, let me play devil's advocate, if there's nothing broken, then why should people remove an incumbent? Don't we remove incumbents when there's something broken in government?
Well, I think we remove incumbents when maybe there's a better choice.
Okay. What makes Wayne Traska a better choice?
I think I bring to the table a perspective that not necessarily everyone will have. Certainly, I'm not the only one who has children in the district, but I also have a background that is business-minded, both professionally and my own experiences. I grew up in a rural community outside of the Wausa area. Both of my parents had eighth-grade educations. They raised me to feel that education was important, and they supported me. I got an undergraduate degree from the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare. I continued that education later in my life. Last December, I graduated from the UW Oshkosh with my MBA. I think...
Congratulations.
Thank you. I think education is very important. And I think my parents just instilled in me that if you can make a difference, education is one place to start.
But do you think our current school district is not doing enough to prepare children for the real world of work, let's say? Can we do better in that regard?
I think we can always do better. Are they doing a good job? I think they're doing a good job.
Okay, okay, sure.
How do you feel about four-year-old kindergarten? That issue has been discussed a lot within the district, other districts as well. They seem to be making movement toward that. How do you feel about it?
Well, I think it's, it's something to be investigated because my own children, actually, we put them in a four-year-old program in the parochial school, because we felt they were prepared to learn, to associate with other children their age, and it was appropriate. But that was our choice at that time with our children. I think some kids maybe do need a step up, or do need to have success at that age, and that environment is probably appropriate. I am concerned, though, if, if it's going to be appropriate for all children, and if it's not appropriate for all children, I'm not sure exactly how that can be implemented. I think, I think there's more to be learned before we just jump in headfirst.
Sure, sure.
The board last year voted for a 4.2% pay benefit package for teachers. Had Wayne Traska been on the board, would you have voted for a package like that?
Well, that's an interesting question, because there are a lot of dynamics to that, to that structure. I do understand that some of the increase actually was a shift in benefits. Teachers are going to be spending a little more money on co-pays and deductibles, as I understand it, and I think that's a move in the correct direction. I think, you know, in the private sector, we've been doing it for quite some time. If you have to pay a little bit more for your own healthcare costs, you become a better consumer, a more responsible consumer of healthcare dollars. So I think that was a positive thing that, that has come out of that, and I think we need to continue to move in that direction.
Alright.
Okay. The school board has entertained ideas of, of spending money on not just a survey or a study, if you will, we're always doing studies, it seems, but also hiring, the potential of hiring a full-time PR person for the district, and yet we just a few years ago did away with a PR position to save money. How do you feel about, A, the study, and B, hiring a PR person? Do we need it?
Well, one of the things that I think the district needs to improve upon is communication, both communicating to the community and all the stakeholders, as well as listening and having the conduits to bring that information back. And I think there is a component in the district that needs to be in place to help facilitate that, to help get their word out, and people understand what they're doing, why they're doing things, as well as getting that feedback back to the district so that they can make decisions that reflect the needs and the desires and the values of the people they serve. And I think somehow, we need to have that function in place.
Does that need to be done with a, an outside consultant who, you know, their expertise is consulting, it's not education? Or should it be better left to, you know, the professionals, who are getting some very high, high dollars for their services?
Well, I think it can be accomplished both ways, or either way, I guess, I guess whatever is most effective would be the appropriate way to do it.
Probably one last question before the final statement. What do you think about Ron Heilman? Is he doing a good job, our superintendent?
Well, I think the results of the district are a reflection of his performance.
I would agree.
There are a lot of good things, I think, have come out of the district over the last several years, and I think that, that does reflect on Ron's performance. You know, I think some of the charter schools have really helped focus on some of the students who have different needs, and have given them an opportunity to succeed, and I think that, that's definitely a reflection of his performance. Now, some of the other things are also a reflection that maybe aren't as good, the communication being one.
That's what I was thinking, alright.
Alright. In about 30 seconds, why don't you just look right into camera three, Wayne, and tell folks why they should vote for you on Tuesday, February 21st.
Well, I think you should vote for me, because I can bring a positive change to the school board. I think that the long-term range facilities planning is going to be a critical component to the future of the school district. I'm not just focused on, what are we going to do with the school district tomorrow, or the year after that? I'm really focused on going beyond. Decisions we make today are going to affect my children, your children's children, and I want to make a difference.
Alright, very good. Thank you so much. If you make it through the primary, we will have you back, and we'll have a longer time to sit and really chat about lots of different issues.
Thank you.
Tony, thank you. Wayne, thank you. And of course, as always, thank you. We'll see you next time. Until then, keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Oshkosh.